I'm missing my gavel at the moment, but we'll go ahead and start. Call it an order for the Thursday, January 25th. Thank you. Two thousand twenty-four, seven P. M. Council meeting as regularly scheduled. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, and let's get started. We're going to have Mr. Reverend Phil Anderson from the Bethel Church of Talmage conduct our opening prayer. Please stand.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the leaders that you've blessed us with here in this city. God, and your word tells us that we should pray for them, and we do that now. We pray, God, that you would bless them in every way, meet every need that they have, and bless this time that they are together, and give them wisdom when it is needed. And we thank you that you continue to give them the strength and the wisdom that they need on a daily basis. And so, Lord, may that continue. We pray for your blessing on this proceeding and pray that you would go before us in your name, Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a fifth-grade student from Talmage Elementary, Sienna Burgen. If you'd like to step up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to govern our motherland with justice, tolerance, and righteousness for all.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bozick.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We are at six of seven this evening. We are in the process of doing a replacement for our other at-large member, so. Item number four, correcting and adopting previous meeting minutes. Our regular meeting held on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have those minutes, and we also have our organizational meeting minutes from one-ten twenty twenty-four.
I had a question on point of order. Can I make a motion to adopt the minutes together, or does it have to be separate?
You can do either or.
Okay.
You might want to.
Separate?
Do it separately, in case anybody has any corrections.
Sure. I'd make a motion to adopt the twelve, fourteen, twenty-three minutes as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion for the adopting the regular meeting minutes from twelve, fourteen, twenty-three and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
All right. They were adopted six-zero. Moving on to our organizational meeting minutes from January tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
As presented.
I'll second.
And a second for Mr. Roy, or Councilman Roy. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes. And that was adopted six-zero. Moving on to our item number five, our financial reports. Currently have none for this evening. We'll continue on with item number six, public hearings. So this evening, we have under our community issues, a public hearing, and I will open it up to our community issues chairman to open that committee, which is.
Me.
Give me. So new council, new committees. So that will be our Councilman Ted Roy. And by all means, if you have any questions, please, we're here to help. We're all learning, so.
All right.
Go ahead and open your committee, sir.
All right. I want to open up the discussion. It's seven oh-five, Community Issues, the third reading and ordinance of the resolution. What we're going to do is get the public input. We're going to have people speak for it and then against it. So when you come up to the podium, we need your name and address. And going to go ahead and read this now. So the third reading of ordinance and resolutions, two oh-two-three dash one oh-three, imposing a six-month moratorium and acceptance of any zoning application for an adult-use cannabis operator and proving for immediate enactment. And it's sponsored by Mayor Klein. So at this time, we'll open it up. If somebody would like to come speak for it, please come to the podium.
And if you can just note the time for the record?
Seven oh-six.
My name is Lee Giddon. I live at one-six-zero-two Timbertop Drive, Talmage. I am for the moratorium. Reason is, I don't believe that our state is ready for this to be enacted, let alone our community, and there is going to be a very large impact. If you look at the data from the states that have already impacted, passed the law. So I am fully for the moratorium, and I look forward to talking to you about when we get ready to open them up.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak for it? All right, then we're going to move on. Anybody that would like to speak against it? All right.
And typically, Mr. Roy, we will go ahead and just, as a function, just call that out three different times. Anyone for, anyone against, then anyone for, anyone against.
So three times. All right. So anybody else for it? Anybody else like to speak against it? And we'll do it one more time. Anybody for or against it? Okay. Thank you. So I closed that out, right? All right. We're going to close out the public hearing, and that'll be seven oh-eight P. M.
And we discuss it. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven.
Well, we got to do a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. We'll go into discussion.
We got to do a motion for.
Right. Everybody needs to make a motion with regards to ordinance. We need a second, and then discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash one oh-three.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gutman, I could not hear what that was.
I said I would second the ordinance.
A second. Sorry. Thank you. That's what I thought, but so.
I mumble.
So we have a first and a second. Any discussion relating to the ordinance?
I do have a final question that I thought of after last week. So this is for six months, and a lot of that is because of the, you know, waiting for some more information from the state. If we don't have all that information at the end of the six months, can you talk about what that process would look like?
Yeah, so there is a way to extend that. It would come back through councilmatic action to extend the moratorium, and we could extend it for another six months if need be, depending on where the state legislature is with adopting regulations, rules and regulations, and where we are internally with regard to what we've looked into. So we can extend that further if need be. But typically, when we extend a moratorium, we just need to have some kind of justification for doing so. So we would need to, you know, have that reason, and them not having everything lined up at the state could be one of those reasons.
Is there any other criteria outside of waiting on the state that you'd be looking at to make that assessment?
Internally, if we didn't feel as a city or as a community that we were ready to proceed in one direction or the other, that could also be a reason why we would extend it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I do.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure, again, for the purpose of the public, that they understand that this is applicable only to the zoning and not to the rest of the regulations that were adopted by the state, so.
Thank you. And so I have a question for the administration. Are we forming any kind of internal committee or ad hoc committee to kind of look at the zoning issues that might come up through this and make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Committee?
So how we've handled it previously when we've had these is we've had like a small group of people try to look at it. Obviously, with this situation, we're kind of hoping that we have some more guidance as to the direction that the state's going with their regulatory scheme. So we may kind of hold off to start having those meetings for a little bit to see where the state's going. So we may not implement that right away. When we do, we will probably have one or two council members that would participate, typically the zoning person, and then if there's somebody else that is, you know, interested, if you want to let us know. And I know that we'll be working with Helene and the mayor and trying to get that together.
Great.
But again, probably not immediately, just because of the circumstances in this case.
Okay. And I know, just from my own research, there's quite a bit of information on, I believe it's the Secretary of State's website for Ohio in regards to, like, even the number of licenses that they're going to issue through the state, kind of how that process is going to take place. So there is quite a bit of information out there already. It's just, again, it's a matter of getting that completely finalized. So for any council members that want to learn more about what's happening at the State House, there's a lot of good information online, so.
I understand it to be kind of like a liquor license.
Yes. Yeah, that was my interpretation of it as well, so. All right. So we have a motion to adopt, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
All right. The ordinance was adopted at a vote of six to zero. And I look forward to meeting with the administration to kind of finalize what we hope to have within the city or not have. Going on to item number seven, community input. It's at this time that we open it up to anybody that's in the audience for community input. Can be typically, we ask that you keep your comments to issues that are not currently on the agenda. If you do have something you'd like to bring up that's on the agenda, kind of do it when we get to those ordinances. You're a lot of two minutes' time, and obviously, we'll stretch that a little if we need to. Anyone in the audience wish to speak this evening? Nope. All right. Moving on to item eight, agenda additions. We do have some discussion and adoption of the two thousand twenty-four council meeting dates, and we also have to, bit of a overlook here on our part with assigning. We assigned a secretary for the firefighters' dependent fund, but we did not assign a chairperson. So we have to go back and kind of rediscuss that. So first off, let's talk about our meeting minutes or our meeting dates. You should have, hopefully, in front of you or through your email, the two thousand twenty-four meeting dates. We have to make a motion to approve these, or those have already been done, so.
No.
If not, if you make a motion and vote on that.
Okay. Do I have any discussion for this evening for the meeting dates?
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Historically, have we included the extra meeting, if needed, for the follow-up to the budget meeting? Or like, is it always on the schedule? Or is that something we?
I think we just started doing it like last year, maybe the year before. So typically, we didn't have that date, and then I think at times it was concerned, we may need to have an extra meeting, and then people didn't have that date blocked out. So it's kind of just as like a hold-the-date type thing.
Okay. So if it's approved tonight, is it technically a regular city council meeting that you can, you have the ability to cancel?
No, it's called out as a possible extra meeting, so it would be set as like a special meeting. I don't know if maybe we want to make it more clear that this is a tentative meeting date, or I don't know. I think the possible extra meeting kind of signals that, but.
I feel like last year, we did that. We approved it late, like, we're going to set this date in July or something, and I think that's when we did that.
Yeah, I think it was on the calendar last year, I think maybe for the first time.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We did it last year, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. Name again?
Sure.
Address again?
Lee Giddon, one-six-zero-two Timbertop. Is there a way a public can get a list of that?
Yes, so when, once these are adopted, will those dates will be put into our city calendar?
Will it be, will there be a form like this we can print off, or will it just show?
It is there now.
Okay.
Even though we didn't approve it yet, but it is in the city, the document center.
Okay.
And actually, it's a link here on our.
The agenda.
I could show you on the web. On the website, if you go to City Council, on our City Council page, we have a list, a link that says meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, these are second and fourth Thursdays.
For the most part.
For the most part.
I believe they're mostly all second and fourths. There may be one in or two in there that are not.
Second and fourth.
I believe.
Well, I think it was denoted that January tenth was on a Wednesday, but it does say up until, I see it, it's on top.
Yeah. Yes.
So technically, you wouldn't really even need to adopt these because by council rules, you meet on the second and fourth Thursdays. However, because there's times where there's a break, or there's times where sometimes, which I don't think it falls this year, but sometimes the trick-or-treat falls on the Thursday, and we bumped that or whatever. So there's those little things. So because of that, that's why you adopt the calendar.
Right.
For the changes.
So, Ms. Law Director, this can be changed throughout the year?
It can be. So we can, we can, you can call a special meeting for purposes if need be, if something comes up that, you know, like, I think one time there was a concert on the Circle, and we wanted to change. So things could happen, but in general, council meets the second and third Thursdays of the month, and I'm sorry, second and fourth, thank you. Sorry, second and fourth, and then, and then there's these few holidays or exemptions to that.
All right. Thank you. The only question I would have for us on council and for the administration is, I know in years past, they've done a summer break at one point, and I don't know if that's something that you can necessarily foresee at the moment of having enough legislation on the agenda, if we should go back to that.
So historically, historically, and I've been here now for a while, almost twenty years, but so historically, there was a summer break, a summer recess. However, there is often, although we can't guarantee it, and it seems like when we switched back to not having a summer break, there is often things moving through the zoning, especially during that time, because it's a heavy construction time. So we didn't want to delay those types of things and in general business, so we kept those calendar dates. And it also seemed like in general, council was not necessarily taking their vacations during that time, and so they would miss other times anyway. So the last few years, again, council had kind of decided not to take a summer break, but that is your prerogative as council to look at that and decide what you want to do.
Okay. I just knew from speaking with another council member, there was at least one date that was going to be a potential conflict where both of us will not be here, but that's two of the seven, so you could still conduct it, but just didn't know if that would be something we want to look at, but.
If I can ask what the date is, because we all have kids now on council, and so it's not as flexible for vacations for us, as I'm sure a lot of us know. So can I ask the date?
So go ahead.
June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-fifth. Okay. So that would give us three people that wouldn't be here that week.
So mine, yeah, I have actually two that are conflicts, June twenty-seventh, July twenty-fifth.
Okay, so that's four of us that would not be here.
Right. Well, three.
Just the three of us?
Two, three. It'd be three absent, yes.
You need four people from council to convene a quorum.
Right.
And then you cannot pass things at first reading with, well, you can, but they don't go no immediate effect with that number, so. But so that's up to you. If you wanted to, if you want to wait and see how everybody's calendar, you could always, again, come back and adjust that closer to the time if you want, or if you want to make that decision now, you can make that call now. Obviously, we're still have one vacancy. Not sure how that will play out.
Yeah, let's wait until we fill that vacancy, and we'll kind of regroup as a council and make sure our dates are lined up or not lined up, so.
Ms. Law Director, just out of curiosity, can you call in or be on video?
No.
Remote? Okay.
The, no. The Ohio Legislature, for a brief period of time during COVID, allowed for those virtual meetings and then does not allow for that.
That's a great question. All right. So I say we, go ahead, and we have a, do we have a first and a second on this as well? We've had discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Okay. Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
All right. That was adopted six to zero. Moving on to the appointment of the Firefighters' Dependent Fund Chairperson. So during our January tenth meeting, we had appointed Mary Gutman as our secretary for the Firefighters' Dependent Fund. We also need to appoint a chairperson for that. I would like to make a motion to move Mrs. Gutman to chairperson, and we fill in secretary with one of us on council.
A second?
Who are you looking for? Is that your nomination?
Mr. Bozick?
Yeah, that's my nomination. Sorry. I mean.
Mr. Bozick, I think these are your appointments. I don't think you need to have a. Mrs. River?
I, no, I have not looked at that.
Okay. I think they.
I didn't pull that.
I think we did vote on them, but I think it was more of a, yeah, semi-appointed. All right. So we have a motion for Mary Gutman to become the chairperson of the Firefighters' Dependent Fund. Do I have any nominations for secretary? Mr. Bolus.
We need to do the first one.
Okay, let's move on to the first one first. All right. So we have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
For Mrs. Gutman to take over as chairperson. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
All right. Passes six-zero. Now, we have to fill the vacancy of secretary. Do I have any nominations for secretary? Mr. Bolus.
I nominate Donald Pavlik.
Yeah, he was unsure of that. All right, so we have a nomination, and I'll second that. So we have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? None. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
All right. That one passes six-zero. Thank you for allowing that change to happen. Let's move on to item nine, reports of the administrative officers. We'll start with Mayor Kilway.
Thank you, Mr. Bozick. I appreciate that. Just a couple of things real quick. Update on my staff. We have hired our H R administrator, so if you guys are in the area and would like to stop by and say hi, her name is Ally Schwartz. She comes to us from the University of Akron, and she comes extremely qualified. We were blown away by her qualifications, and then we happened to look at her address after we had offered her a position, and she just happens to live in Talmage. So to me, that's a bonus as well. So we're very happy to have Ally in the office this week. We've had a number of things happen throughout the week, throughout the last couple of weeks. We did have social media training today through the Ohio Municipal League. It prompted a lot of great discussion and review of our policies. They are going to make this webinar available to us, and I would really like to share that with council, because I think that maybe it's a good video for you guys to watch, because it does affect our daily lives as public officials. So as soon as we get that, that video and instruction, we will forward it out to you guys. Congresswoman Amelia Sykes did sponsor a first responders' grant summit where she had FEMA come in and do a seminar on applying for grants, and that was for our first responders. It was primarily for fire, but there was some information there for our police, so both of our chiefs were there, and there was a lot of supporting staff there as well. And we were fortunate enough to have it at our Summit Emergency Communications Center, so that was a great bonus for us as well. Chief Bohan did set up and included some of us in some PRADCO leadership workshop, and it was very informative, some real useful information, and there's quite a number of employees and staff within the city that attended it, and we had a lot of good feedback on that. So what else do we have here? I had a meeting at Portage Development Board today. There's a lot of really good things happening, some really exciting things happening in the JED, and as soon as I get the okay to discuss them with you, with you guys, let you know what it is, I will do that. I do, I'm going to keep a close hand with what's going on in Portage County, because it's very important to us. So I'll let you know as soon as I'm allowed to disclose what it is that's coming into the JED. And then finally, you know, it is just a couple of months away, the April eighth solar, total solar eclipse, and due to our strategic location, we can expect to have a big visitor surge in the area. We do have on the community page of our website, there is some information about that. I do want to set up a meeting with Police, Fire, Rec Service to discuss the impact and to make sure that we're all on the same page, so we're going to be doing that here very shortly. And it has been put out, I think the Beacon picked up on it, that the Fairgrounds is selling parking and camping spaces to people that want to come and view, so that will have a big impact on our safety services, so we need to, you know, be proactive. So we're going to be working on that here very shortly as well. Any questions from council?
Well, thank you, Mayor Kilway. Appreciate the report. Looking forward to hearing about what's coming to the JED.
Yes.
And by all means, please send the invite for that eclipse. I would love to be a part of that planning as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll skip over item B, unless you have more to add on that, Mayor Kilway, for Director of Administration, Director of Safety.
I kind of put all that together, so.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item C, Director of Public Service.
Good evening. I'd like to request a first reading tonight that ordinances twenty-twenty-four, fifteen, Good evening. I'd like to request, uh, at first reading tonight that, uh, ordinances 2024, 15, 17, 18, and 19, and 20 are all passed at first reading. If you guys can do that, that'd be great. Uh, moving on to the monthly report. Uh, just to go over the snowplow routes again, uh, we did this last time. Keep in mind, there is a strategy. We have primary routes, which are the blue ones, which are the mains. We do those first. We stay on those so we can get off of them. Then we move to the secondary routes, which are the red routes. Those are, uh, a way to get everybody in and out of their development. And then lastly are the allotment roads. Those are usually dead ends or roads that are small enough that, uh, unfortunately they're last. Uh, some snow events, depending on the snow event, we may not get off the mains. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast. But, uh, I do want to commend all the plow drivers. The last, uh, two weeks, they did a great job, in my opinion. Uh, we, they, roads look good, in my opinion. So, um, moving on, some great news. Uh, back in, uh, the 11th, uh, November 9th, the council meeting, ordinance 2395, uh, we applied for four grants. We scored two of them actually and that's good news. Uh, big dollars there. I mean, that's a million dollars for number two. That's, uh, for the Monroe Falls, uh, from East Wood down to Perry. And then the, uh, number three, we scored 646,000 and that's, uh, for, um, Eastwood, uh, from Monroe to the city limits. Uh, I want you guys to keep in mind, um, our paving budget's a million dollars. So that's excellent that we were able to score these. Uh, so that's huge. Um, thanks to AMATS, they, they, they did a great job for us. That first one up there, the application resurfaced, um, East Avenue came in fourth. So we almost made it. They feel pretty confident that we got the points to probably do better next year and hopefully we score on that. But, uh, excellent news. So next year, 2025, those roads should get paved and, and we're going to start doing recon, reconnaissance on all the infrastructure, the pipes and the, and the sanitary sewers to make sure none of the, nothing needs replaced on those roads before we pave them. So, end of my report unless there's any questions.
Very good. Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Rohr, for, uh, brought up an issue from, uh, a resident, uh, and you addressed it immediately. So thank you, sir, for, uh, taking care of that.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on to item D, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, just a reminder to everybody, tax season is actually getting ready to start up. We're already starting to see visitors in City Hall to do their city tax returns. So, um, we do use the Regional Income Tax Agency for our collections. They have a lot of great resources on their website, which is RitaOhio.com. And, um, if any residents need any help or have questions, um, you can direct them there or send them to my office and we'll be glad to help them. End of report.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item E, Director of Law.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to, uh, state for the record that I am going to be requesting an executive session this evening to discuss pending litigation. I will ask for that at the end of the meeting, um, prior to adjournment, but we will not be coming back to take any action, just for those people who will be tuning in later.
All right. Thank you. Um, and for those of you watching, so when then we get to that time, we'll, you may see the screen go off, um, but we will be back only to do adjournment. So technically, the meeting's over at that point. So. Um, all right. Let's move on to our committees. Item number 10, reports sustained committees of the council of the whole, starting with our Planning and Zoning. Councilwoman Gutman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will call Planning and Zoning to order and we have nothing before us tonight. Does anyone have anything for Planning and Zoning? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll close committee.
Thank you. Uh, item B, Finance. Uh, Mr. Pavlik, sir.
All right. I call the Finance Committee to order. The Finance Committee deals with the budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. We currently have first readings of ordinances tonight. First one is ordinance 20, 2024 dash 17, expressing intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit municipal personal property, including without limit to vehicles, equipment by internet error and/or auto auction in the calendar year 2024 and providing for an immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the Service Director have any comment on this?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. So this is housekeeping. So throughout the year, we may do two or three, uh, auctions of our equipment or, um, furniture, whatever it is that we're trying to get rid of. And we do bring that back to council. So before we sell it, we give you guys a list of what we're selling. So you guys have another chance to take a look at that equipment or furniture. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members have any comments?
Uh, question. Are we still utilizing the, um, online auction, um, the name of its?
Govdeals?
Yes, Govdeals.
Yeah, Govdeals. Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2024 dash 17 at first reading.
Second. Okay. Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2024 dash 17 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance 2024 dash 21, accepting donations to the city of Talmage for 2023 and providing for an immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Director of Finance, Ms. Gilbreath. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the Finance Director have any comments on this?
Um, this is just a standard procedure that we have to go through every year, um, listing out any donations that the city has received from outside sources. Um, they're all included in there and, um, just asking council to accept those donations.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2024 dash 21 at first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance 2024 dash 21 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2024 dash 22, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with competitive bidding and through the state purchasing program or as authorized by R dot C dot, C dot 125 dot 04C with MNJ Technologies for the purchase of computer equipment, software licenses, and related equipment and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the mayor have any comments on this?
So first of all, it, reading it into the record, you said enter into a contract with competitive bidding. It's without competitive bidding.
Oh, without, sorry. Okay, sorry. Without competitive bidding. Correct.
So this is through the state purchasing program. This is just a housekeeping issue in order for us to continue with the licensing for Microsoft and so forth.
And if I can just clarify, on this one and then the, um, there's another one, 2024.
And the next one is Microsoft, yes.
It will be, um, they, they also allow for us to a, also use in, uh, another co-op if need be. It kind of calls it out generically. So in case there's another one that has a lower price, we're allowed to do that, which is, again, is provided under the Ohio Vice Code, section 125 point 04C. So we, we called out, um, Sourcewell on the line and on this one, we kind of let it, left it generic because we don't know which one we'll be able to use. But it'll be state purchasing or another co-op that is permitted by law.
Madam Finance Director, is there a budgeted amount for this?
Right. So all of these ordinances are constrained by what, uh, what the appropriations is that were already passed by council through the budget.
Got it. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt 2024 dash 22 at first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2024 dash 22 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2024 dash 23, authorizing the mayor to purchase online subscription services with Microsoft Corporation, which are special in nature and not requiring competitive bidding and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this bill is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the mayor have any comments on this?
Um, no, not really. This is, you know, it's in the budget and it's a housekeeping item in order for us to continue doing business.
Thank you. Counsel have any comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt 2024 dash 23 at first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 20, 2024 dash 23 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2024 dash 24, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract without competitive bidding and through the state purchasing program or Sourcewell or as authorized by R dot C dot 125 dot 04C with Johnson Control, Inc. for the purchase of integrated security, software licenses, and related equipment and providing for an immediate enactment. Sponsor of this bill is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the mayor have any comments on this?
Um, just again, this is another housekeeping item that is in the budget and it allows us to continue doing our business.
Okay. Council members have any comments?
Yes, I have one. Uh, just sir, anyone watching at home, because we're flying through these, is when we say housekeeping, these are ordinances that, um, we discuss on an annual basis. They are things that help the operations of the city administration do their day-to-day operations. So, uh, a lot of these are just what we call them, housekeeping items that just need to be taken care of at the beginning of, uh, each year. So, just a quick little overview there. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt 2024 dash 24 at first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Okay. With that, ordinance 2024 dash 24 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2024 dash 25, authorizing participation in the National Association of State Procurement Officials and the National Association of State Procurement Officials value point for the purpose of contracting with Verizon Wireless for telephone and internet services and providing for an immediate, immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the mayor have any comments on this?
Um, just again, that this is a housekeeping item. It is in the budget and it will allow us to continue operating the city.
Council members have any comments? With none, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt 2024 dash 25 at first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. With that, Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Okay. With that, ordinance 2024 dash 25 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Last, we have ordinance 2024 dash 26, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to enter into a contract for the replacement of a culvert in deteriorating storm sewer on Elton Avenue and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. This ordinance has been read into the record. Does the Service Director have any comments on this?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. Um, so this is a, a two-year project and it's going into year three, actually. Uh, we ended up needing engineering last year. So we ended up, uh, going out to get engineering. So we're back on track. We should be able to get this job done. I'd like to get this job done, um, before we pave because North Thomas Road is going to get paved and this is where that crossing is occurring at. So, and then it was budgeted as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Counsel members have any questions?
If I may, I just wanted to point out for the record, um, we did, uh, a, a typographical error was brought to our attention that this should be Elton Avenue instead of Elton Drive. There is no other Elton in the city. So I don't think there's an issue of misidentification of the road that is being discussed, but, um, we will make that, uh, correction to the ordinance before it's fully, uh, adopted and generalized.
Thank you. Council members have any comments?
Mr. Chair, um, what is the, um, budgeted amount for this project?
I think it was 150.
150K? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt 2024 dash 26 at first reading with the Elton Avenue correction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that, Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2024 dash 26 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the Finance Committee this evening? Okay. With that, I will close the Finance Committee meeting. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Uh, well done. Moving on to, uh, item C, Personnel.
Uh, good evening. Uh, call Personnel Committee to order. Uh, we are all present this evening. Uh, tonight at second readings of resolutions and ordinances, we have, uh, ordinance 2024 dash 15 tracked. There is a public hearing set for this ordinance on February the 8th, 2024 at 7:05 PM. This is establishing the number of non-collective bargaining employees by department and per, and position pursuant to RC 731 dot 08 and providing for immediate enactment. It is sponsored by Mayor Kilway. Uh, any comments or, um, any discussion around this ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Bolus?
Yes.
Just to, um, remind you from last meeting, um, this basically it takes the last administrative assistant that's in the city from a classified position to an unclassified position. So all the administrative, um, assistants in the city will then have the same classification or, or non-classification. Oh, in the service department. I'm sorry, not in the city, the service department.
Okay. Uh, any discussion amongst council regarding this ordinance? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Uh, does the administration, um, have any future updates on, uh, the grid that are coming down the line that we should be aware of, that we may want to include in, uh, in the future, near future?
No, I do not, not in the, not in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, that'll stay at second reading. Uh, anything else to come before Personnel Committee, uh, this evening? All right. Uh, I'll close committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will move on to, uh, item D, Safety, uh, which currently the chairperson is vacant. Uh, so we'll have, uh, Mr. Councilman Ted Roy, uh, Vice Chair will run the committee.
Okay. I'd like to call a Safety, uh, Committee to order. Uh, the Safety Committee deals with Disaster Services, Communications, Fire, and Paramedics, Police, and Health. At this time, is there any additional items? We have nothing. And I will go ahead and close Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item E, Community Issues.
I'd like to call to order Community Issues. The Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Rec, Civil Affairs, liaison between council and the Recreation Board and intergovernmental affairs. First reading of resolution and ordinance, um, 2024 dash 27, authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program for the Minor Home Repair Program and providing for immediate enactment. This is sponsored by Mayor Kilway.
Go ahead, Molly. She knows more about this.
So at the end of last year, we were in the process, through the CDBG grant, we run a minor home repair program. Uh, through the end of last year, we had had appropriated some funds. We were not able to complete those projects to a point where we could encumber the funds. So those funds are now carried forward and we need to reappropriate those into the 2024 budget.
She explains it a lot better than I could, so that's why.
Mrs. Gilbreath, do you want this passed tonight?
If you could, that would, that would be helpful. So we could move forward with the contracts and then start the repairs on the individuals' homes.
Then I would make a motion to adopt 2024 dash 27 at first reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, question. When you say repair, minor home repairs, whose home and how do they apply and?
So CBD, CBDG funds are federal funds. So they, um, apply through our office, through the Community Development Director. She works very closely with Summit County, who provides us with the CDBG funding reimbursements. And so, uh, residents of the city of Talmage can apply. There are certain criteria, income guidelines, different things that they have to meet. The county, uh, will then go through the resident's home and identify repairs to their home that can be funded with a grant, such as windows, roof replacements, things to make their home safe and secure. And, um, that's all in coordination with the county. And then the funding, it's run through the city because we do, um, have a matching, the city puts a matching portion towards the federal grant.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
If I may ask a question as well, can you, um, would that information to apply be found on the website? Or if someone did want to apply, what would be the best route?
Yes, it is on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is, uh, question. Sorry. I, is there a cap on what they can apply for?
Um, yes. So there are, I, I don't, it's not a hard cap, but it's not. Um, yes, so there are, I, I don't, it's not a hard cap, but it's not, most of the projects cost between, I would say, ten to seventeen thousand dollars with half of it being federally funded and half being matched by the city.
So, we had money that was left over from last year, we're putting it over into 2024?
Correct, we, correct. This is all just money that we had, had left over from last year's program. We were trying to get rid of the remaining dollars and we just were not able to get the contracts in place with the contractors to do the repairs. So, the appropriation lapsed, the money's still there available in the fund, and we're just asking you to appropriate it, to spend it.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Roy, I believe we have a question from the audience.
Yes.
Lee Giddon, 1602 Timbertop Drive. Question, when you were talking about how the appropriation goes and it goes through the county, we're kind of unique in Talmage. We're divided into counties. Do they also work with Portage County? Or is it just Summit County residents?
I believe the program only is to Summit County residents, but I don't know that for a fact. So, I will, I can get that information and provide it. But I do, don't know if the Portage County portion would be eligible because it's a Summit County-funded program.
Okay.
You ready?
Going to call?
Okay.
Do we get a second?
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Is there any additional items for community services? If not, I'll go ahead and close. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item F, Public Service. Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements such as water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycle waste, and trash. We have before us tonight at first reading ordinance 2024-18 authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and the mayor to award a contract for trucking and hauling and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. The ordinance has been read into the record. Mr. Rohr, would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, so, at times throughout the year, we need some larger trucks to do some hauling, leaf season, or if a storm blows through. So, this gives us an opportunity to go out and get the, get a company that can do that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-18 this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Pavlik and a second by Ms. Gutman. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance?
Yes, Madam Chair. What amount, Mr. Rohr, are we anticipating?
Hopefully, less than 50,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes. Ordinance 2024-18 has passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also before us tonight at first reading is ordinance 2024-19 authorizing the Ohio Director of Transportation to complete the mowing of IR 76 within the city limits and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr, and the ordinance has been read into record. Mr. Rohr, would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, thank you. So, this gets us, so we don't have to mow the interstate. So, the section that runs through the city, we're responsible for that mowing, and this allows us to get off of that. So, the state does it for us.
So, Mr. Rohr, does, do we pay this? So, we're just basically approved and then they're going to?
Yep, we're asking them to do it.
All right.
And it's just housekeeping. So, you know, the banks along the ramps and everything, that's, that's them, that's, that's on them.
I have one question. Just on behalf of the residents, that I ask, I know we've talked about this before, I said, in prior years, we've discussed sound barriers and ODOT not being able to explore that option without an existing project. Technically, the ordinance has described this work as a project. Would this project qualify for them to review that sound barrier?
It's maintenance.
Okay, so it's routine maintenance, not a project?
It would have to be some improvement, widening the lanes, adding a ramp, something of that nature.
Okay, just doing my due diligence on their behalf because I get that call. That's probably the second biggest complaint I get in Ward Three right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question and relate, bouncing off of that. With the work that has taken place at, in Brimfield, as you get off 76 on East Avenue, they changed the route, the exit on the Mogadore Road, and I believe they're going to do some work on the other side. Would that qualify as a project? And how far do they, is there a mileage they allow from the distance from the project site?
I, I don't know that answer, but I'm going to say since it's not in Talmage, it's not going to work on our side.
Worth, worth maybe a phone call for us?
Yeah, I'll definitely find that out, but yeah.
Deal.
It's not in Talmage.
Yeah. And on the topic, you know, for those watching too, we followed up with our state rep on this as well. So, it's just something we'll continue to look, look at.
Mr. Rohr, do you know when they diamond cut that road? Because I lived there at the time, did they ever talk about putting sound barriers up?
That was before my time.
Before your time, okay.
Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-19?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pavlik and a second by Ms. Gutman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-19 has, 2024-19 has passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lastly, before us tonight at first reading is ordinance number 2024-20 authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for CCTV inspection and cleaning consulting services relating to city sewers and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr, and the ordinance has been read into the record. Mr. Rohr, would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, thank you. So, what we'll do here is we'll go out and solicit three or four companies. There's not a lot of companies in the area that does this business. So, this is where they go through and, and jet the sanitary sewer lines to clean them and then televise them. So, we have record of how good the lines are. So, this just gives us an opportunity to do that. It's really housekeeping.
Is this the entire city that is done or is just a certain?
No, we, we were hopeful that we could do it in four years. We're looking at probably doing the whole city looped in eight. It's quite, yeah, it's quite a bit of work.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-20?
So moved. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Pavlik and a second by Mr. Bolus. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-20 has passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything further for Public Service Committee this evening?
Madam Chair, I just had one question. In the fall, I believe we submitted a resolution or voted on a resolution regarding Akron exploring like a water treatment facility that could substantially increase the water rates if the project was given the green light. Is there any update on that project, that proposal, where it's, where it sits right now?
I've not heard anything. So, that was?
It was a resolution against?
It was, it was treatment. So, it wasn't?
Yeah, treatment.
It was sanitary water. I've not heard anything back from it. So, I'm going to guess since I'm not hearing anything that maybe it's, it's died out, I'm hoping. But I'll follow up and see if EPA is still on Akron about that.
Okay.
That was an EPA?
Yep.
Requirement that they were asking Akron to do.
Okay. And then, any other updates regarding either, you know, water sewer, gas electric rates for 2024? I know we had various rate discussions last year and, you know, there was some stuff coming up in the future. Any updates come across your desk in that regard?
No, but all the aggregation, the electric and the gas is up, I believe, this year. So, we'll, we'll be talking about it more. And then, there's probably some increase coming with the water, but we've not been in contact with Akron at all and that. So, they've not reached out to us. But I know it's getting ready to start. They want to negotiate with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion for the committee this evening? All right, hearing none, I will close Public Service Committee.
All right. Moving on to Item 11, reports of special committees. We have the Council Operations Committee, Mr. Bolus, if you'd like to give us an update?
Yeah, we, we had a really good meeting this week with Dove AV and the mayor, finance director, and various representatives from the city moving forward with the project. So, we're going to get some upgrades, continue upgrades in this council chambers regarding the, the main display as well as our microphones. So, those are, those have all been budgeted for, for 2024. And then, the Dove is also exploring our, our audio speaker system.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Item 12, announcements. I know Councilwoman Epstein has an announcement she'd like to make as well.
Yes, thank you very much. I have been working with my other at-large counterpart, Mr. Bozick, and we are excited to announce that we will be co-hosting an event together. The event will be called Hearts for Heroes, and it is a letter-writing campaign to our troops currently deployed overseas. And so, we would like to invite all of our community members out to join us at the library. This will be taking place on Saturday, February 10th, at the library community room. And that is going to be from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Ms. Epstein, what would entail? Is it card making or is it letters or?
We will be providing the supplies. So, you have the option. You can make a homemade card. You can write a letter. You'll have both options available.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you opened that up to anybody at the schools or anything? Maybe they might want to come in?
Yes, great question. So, we'll be making some outreach to the schools because I think this would be a great event to engage with them. We've also made contacts with our scout troops and here in council.
Super, good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. And again, thank you for bringing that up. I think it's a great project, something that we can do together as a community. So, really looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Thank you for co-hosting.
All right, at this time, any other announcements? Mayor?
Yes, and I'm only announcing this because I, if you have not watched the news or anything, I don't want you to get blindsided by it. We kind of didn't say anything because we weren't sure if it was going to get aired or not. But Isabel Lawrence from WKYC3 News did come in. I think I had mentioned the last time that there was going to be a nice feel-good piece that was going to come out highlighting Talmage. And so, it did highlight the law director, the finance director, as myself, as being women leaders of the city. And they found just two communities so far in, in Ohio that have all female leadership. And it was a nice little piece. So, I'm sure it's getting pushed out on social media. That's why I just want to let you know. You'll probably be seeing something about it. I didn't want you to be blindsided. But it was a nice little piece that, that happened, so.
Great. That's great. Really looking forward to.
You should have emails probably sitting in here.
Yeah, we did get an email, so.
Andrew sent one.
Yeah, we're going to.
Probably as we were speaking.
We did, we did. So, thank you. So, at this time, we will not take a motion for adjournment because we have executive session. So, the time currently is 8:05, and we will break for executive session and be back only to close out for adjournment. So, if you're watching at home, the meeting's pretty much over, other than adjournment.
You have to vote to go into, you have to vote to go into executive.
Yeah, we have to vote to go into adjournment, or to executive session.
And you have to state the reason.
Yeah.
We will be going into executive session this evening to discuss pending litigation with the city.
So, that's the motion, and then we need a second?
I'll second that.
And then, any discussion?
Any discussion. Madam Clerk, call it. Thank you.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes. All right, we are now in executive session by a vote of six to zero. All right, we are now in executive session by 6:00.
Yes.
Yep.
You get it? All right.
All right, thank you and welcome back. The time is...I have such a glare on that clock. So, time is 8:53 PM. We have concluded our executive session. At this point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second?
First and second. Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?